Of the United States, and of our republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cecily, roll call, please.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Thorstad.
Here.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
President Protem Mahler.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
President.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Let the record show that there are seven present and no absent. Moving on, consent agenda. In the consent agenda is an authorization to sign property line adjustment in two minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Cecily, please call for the vote.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
President Protem Mahler.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yeah.
Let the record show that there are seven ayes and no nays. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Today, we are going to recognize the beautification committee. So if you all can stand up and whoever's here representing them and come forward, please. We have a few things for you. But I just want to say that the beautification committee has been serving the community of Sweet Home for a very long time, making our medians beautiful. Please come forward. I gotta stand on the microphone or else they can't hear me. So you come forward. All the way up to here. You can do it. Lead the way, Patty.
Name and address.
All the way up here. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then face the crowd. And these are just some other representatives of the beautification committee. There are others. Maybe you can just share with us real briefly your names and how long you've been helping on the beautification committee. And I didn't ask you that ahead of time. So sorry. Patty, you go first. Well, Candace has not only been on the beautification committee, but she has loaned her husband to us for many years as a city attorney. So I just want to say thank you so much, Candace Snyder. Appreciate it. But we have a few items we would like to give to you, but just as a welcome or a thank you.
So we have a few things. Oh, are there more people? No, he's just the cameraman. He might have been naked. Some special pin for you all. And this is not, so we have them for various volunteers as well, and it's the sunflower because of the sunflower, which brought joy to the median unexpectedly. He was fine. Howie, can I give you a kiss on the kiss? Okay, perfect. And then that's for the rest of the volunteers. Great. And then, oh, perfect. And, oh, gosh. So we also.
Yeah, the pen.
Some plants, and we deliberately tried to plant that would be low maintenance. Your fans' fault. So we just want to say thank you. It makes me so beautiful. Great idea. It's been various things for many members here. Very, thanks you so much.
I know we're not the easiest crowd to get in front of, so thank you so much, beautification committee, for being here tonight. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm going to read the proclamation. Mental Health Awareness Month 2024 proclamation, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas promotion and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that support user-friendly tools that all Americans can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, faith-based organization, healthcare provider, veterans groups, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts, and whereas Sweet Home, as well as the nation as a whole, is finally returning to a more normal routine, it is important to remember that feeling anxious, confused, overwhelmed, or powerless remain as common problems and are quite normal. By limiting media consumption, staying connected with loved ones, and staying active, we can maintain our mental health as we try to protect our physical health. And whereas the Lynn County Mental Health Advisory Board and the City of Sweet Home Community Health Committee are emphasizing that there is no health without mental health by being involved with public service announcements, health fairs, public speakers, and various trainings regarding mental health issues. Now, therefore, I, Susan Coleman, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Sweet Home. As mayor, I also call upon the citizens, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Sweet Home to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Proclaim this 7th day of May, nope, 14th day of May 2024. I would like to say that the reason I read this proclamation every year is because the youth of the YAC committee, this is their biggest concern, is mental health. And so out of honor and respect for them, I'm just bringing that to people's attention. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is new business, request for council action, resolution number nine for 2024.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So I'm going to talk about some fairly exciting news, but before I do that, I want to talk about Greg Springman. And Greg came into the city of Sweet Home about, what, six years ago? Almost seven?
Seven.
And in that time, has done absolutely incredible things for the city of Sweet Home. He has revamped the Public Works Department. He has been working on this wastewater treatment plant. He has improved morale. He has changed teams. I mean, there is nothing, he built Sankey Park. There is no area of Sweet Home that Greg Springman hasn't touched and improved. And I think everyone in Sweet Home should always be eternally grateful to Greg. I also want to just talk about my experience. I came in as city manager, and Greg was one of the very first directors who told me everything, and then some. And has been working with me by my side daily since I started and really got me through some tough times here, too. Greg also, we would not have been able to do Paint the Town without Greg. And just an unbelievable amount of pieces. Sweet Home is now in another place where, once again, Greg is stepping up to see us through. And what that is, is we lost some of our team for the wastewater and water treatment center, and we also are dealing with new challenges that we've never dealt with before. We have the Green Peter drawdown, which is greatly impacting the way that we're going to be dealing with water treatment plants. And we are finally, finally, largely in part to Greg as well, able to move forward with the construction of our wastewater treatment plant. So Greg has offered to control those two pieces and see us through on the construction of that and focus on the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. So Greg is going to be moving into that role, and I would just like to take a moment to just say thank you for your incredible dedication to Sweet Home. It would be very easy, I know, for you to retire, to go to another place with less challenges, to spend more time focusing on your family, and you still are seeing us through this transition. So from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say thank you. And I will make you talk. So Greg will still be staying with us, but we are transitioning to a different role. So Greg's going to be our assistant director of public works, and he's going to be managing water treatment plants and the wastewater treatment plants. So we went out for an additional public works director that can work in tandem with Greg as we're moving forward. And we have an individual who has a great deal of background in both managing and directing public works, but then is also a certified engineer. And so we have created a new role that is the public works director slash city engineer. As we are moving forward, we are seeing more developments and having a city engineer on staff is really critical for us at this time. So what you see in front of you is a resolution to update our current salary schedule. And what we are proposing and recommending that we do is, I'm trying to find the exact page, I have it easily on my computer. Ah, here we go. So what we are recommending that we do is here, you can see the current public works director salary, and right above that is the staff engineer. So we, by moving to a city engineer position, we are not going to be utilizing the staff engineer position anytime soon, and it's not going to be in this upcoming budget. Instead, what we are doing is we have a post for the public works director slash city engineer, and it's actually going to end up being about a savings of $67,000 per year. So this is going to be an area where we can actually have services, continue to save some funds, and if, as we're moving forward, there needs to be a city engineer or a staff engineer role, we would bring that back in an additional budget session. So the individual who's moving forward, his name is Shukri, and he has experience in Nevada, California, Washington, and his family is in Oregon, and so he's very interested in being here in this area. His background includes actually building and designing a wastewater treatment plant, a water treatment plant, multiple roads. He has background in obtaining grants. He is very familiar with WIFIA and some of the other programs. And I think he's a very good complement to Greg. And Greg was part of the selection process, and this was his pick as well.
Any questions from counselors?
Madam Mayor, if I may, the first time I met Greg, when he told me he was in California, I had some real coaching. It's not good. But he turned out pretty doggone good. He's done a really, really good job. And he's got us where, from where we were to where we are now. And that's a big deal for us, a big deal. So I appreciate him and his crew. They're all really good. They're really good.
Greg, you have built an incredible team. Not only have you built a great team, you've brought all of our management of our water and our wastewater in-house, which has saved us a million dollars a year. And then when you found that huge leak, that was just incredible when you guys found that, too. But just the ingenuity of your team, that you allowed them to do just different things. You know, when we first started the leaf pickup system, that you allowed them to build that system and figure out how to make it happen, just giving them that freedom to do that. I just appreciate your leadership, and you will be sadly missed in this position, but I just appreciate the fact that you are willing to stick with us during a transition. And I'm sure that you're more excited than we will all be when this wastewater treatment facility gets built. Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate the opportunity. I came here for a job, stayed for the people, and did a lot of great things, and am still going to be here.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
We're glad you're here.
We are very glad you're here, and we're glad you stayed because you've been a great addition to our community, so.
I want to say thank you, too, Greg. You've done a phenomenal job.
Yeah.
I'd like to say thank you. As a city counselor, it means a lot to have somebody with your work ethic and integrity, giving us the advice that we need, that we can trust, and that we can always rely on, that you have done the best job possible bringing that information to us and out there with our, in our community every day and doing an A-plus game every day. And I really appreciate that.
Yeah. Yep. That integrity has been huge. I've learned more about wastewater and water facilities than I ever thought I would know. So it's kind of hard to approve this, but at the same time, I'm just grateful for you.
Yeah, I think we've done enough here.
So we have a request for council action in front of us, if anybody is open to making a motion. Second, a motion in a second on the table. Cecily, will you please call for a vote?
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
President Protem Mahler.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve resolution nine for 2024. Moving on, request for council action, resolution 10 for 2024.
All right, thank you very much. And one piece I didn't add on that last piece, too, is we wouldn't necessarily be able to even structure these things or have that cost savings if Greg hadn't been willing to move into this position. And I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. And I also want to point out, he's already making improvements with the wastewater and water treatment plant, so it's really been fantastic. So, all right, I'll stop there, but again, thank you. So moving on to the next piece. And so I know we all have talked quite a bit about recreational immunity, and that's been one of those things that has been a big concern. So, and there were concerns as far as Newport, there was somebody who had tripped and all sorts of pieces, and I know you all are familiar with this. It's been going back and forth at the state level for a while now, and it has moved forward that recreational is back in place, and that was signed off by the governor. However, it's a temporary legislation piece right now. And so one of the things that we can do in order to strengthen this is to go ahead and do our resolution stating that we are opting in on recreational immunity. And so that's what this currently is. It provides us that extra layer of protection. Right now, we should still be protected, but by adding this extra layer, we are doing another safeguard for ourselves regarding recreational immunity, which I think is also very important right now, since we are trying to increase the amount of recreation available in Sweet Home. And so this will help protect us. And we also recommended, we moved this forward as a resolution with the idea that as things change, we can bring it back to council as needed and modify it if that becomes necessary. So are there any questions on that?
Thank you for doing the work and taking this extra step that can ensure us. So any questions from counselors? There's a request for action, if anybody would like to make a motion.
So. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Cecily, please call for the vote.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
President Protem Mahler.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to move resolution number 10, 2024, forward. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, reports of city officials, city managers' report.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the first thing, I want to thank everybody for their patience and flexibility as we're trying to finish budgets. So we have finally finished our numerical draft. We're just finishing our final pieces there, so we would like to move forward with a budget committee meeting at 6:00 PM on May 30th, if council would be open to that. It's very challenging to get these dates, so if you can be open to that, that would be.
I will be unable to attend.
Oh, okay.
My daughter's graduating from eighth grade.
Okay. All right, anybody else? All right, we will go back to the drawing board. Just so everybody is aware, there is a long process of having to notice in various pieces. So this does make it a little challenging, but we will try to reach out to you, and obviously graduation dates and things need to be met. So we will get back to council on that, and the committee will continue to see additional emails. So another, just a couple of things. Council approved the stop signs moving forward, and our public works team has gotten all of the equipment for that. So now we're just working with PD and our communications team on getting those ready because we want to make sure that we are communicating, actually over-communicating with the community because there are going to be additional stop signs in our community, and it can be very easy to miss those if you're not used to them. So please keep an eye out for that communication, and hopefully sometime next week, we will be sharing the plan with everyone. So we also had our first community market meeting, our community market event on Saturday, and we were full. And so that's really exciting. So we want to thank all of our vendors and so forth who were there, and also remind everybody, go out and please support these vendors, and this is a great way to support small local businesses that are trying to get started here in Sweet Home, and some businesses that are a little more established that are also trying to reach out. So we do still have some openings. If anybody is interested, please contact the library, but we also have some posts on Facebook that can provide some information there. And we just, so everyone is aware, the city council elections for to be a city council member, open on June 5th. So if you want to sign up to be a city counselor, or if you need to rerun, that will open starting June 5th, and it closes in August. So what's the final date on that, Cecily?
August 27th.
August 27th, thank you. So if you want to make sure to get it in before then, but this does give everybody some time. And finally, we are launching Citizens Academy, and we're extremely excited about this. It's going to be a training that we're hoping all of council will attend. We're going to be asking all of our staff members to attend, and then any volunteers or people who want to be volunteers or who just want to learn more about the city, come and join us. Each department is going to be teaching some key, interesting things about the city. We're also going to be talking about emergency management, incident management, and leadership, and volunteer opportunities. Once Citizens Academy has launched, we are creating some additional volunteer opportunities in different groups. So one is going to be for parks and helping with parks, coming up with ideas, reporting on any type of vandalism or concerns that you see on parks, and then also there will be some various projects where we get to do some landscaping, even some putting in of equipment, and just making the community better. We're also going to be doing neighborhood improvement. So if you're interested in trying to help your neighbor, trying to help within somebody who maybe isn't able to mow their lawn, but being able to reach out to them and help with that, building up Sweet Home, painting, any of those areas, and just making it better. Or it's also going to have a group for youth, and then emergency management as well. And there's a couple of areas that we're going to be exploring as well, provided that there's enough interest in the community. And it's a really great way that if you're interested in trying to help the community, we hear from volunteers all the time, you know, I want to do something, but I can't commit to something like a committee. This will also be talking about various projects, and we're also hoping it will be a pipeline to then have people more involved, joining committees, joining other groups that we already have going on, and maybe even joining city council in the future. So please watch for that as well. You're going to see advertisements for that probably before the next council meeting. So thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Regarding Citizens Academy, is it a one-meeting time, or is it multiple meetings? And how many weeks is it, if so?
Great question. So we are still finalizing all of that. We're going to offer it multiple times so that we can hopefully get people at different times. It's going to be around five hours total. And so we're going to introduce it as an evening course. It's over two evenings, as well as probably a Saturday session as well. And, but we're going to be trying to send out when this works best for everybody. We may, for council and others who wanted to do it, if we have some free council meetings where we don't have a workshop, we may try to add that in here and there as well, maybe in front of one council meeting and then later that week.
Sounds good. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, mayor's report. City manager Young mentioned work sessions, and if you look at the city calendar, you will see that there are multiple work sessions that are planned for the next few city council meetings. There is going to be one for downtown standards and one for Parks Master Plan. And also, June 25th at 5:30, there's going to be a work session on city council rules. That was one of our goals for this next fiscal year, but also something that I know has caused some questions regarding council. So that is on the calendar, and hopefully we can all attend those work sessions. And, yes.
It's actually going to be starting at 4:30?
4:30. You're right. That one's at 4:30. Excuse me. The other ones are at 5:30, and that's Tuesday, June 25th. Also, I would propose, we did this last year, and I thought it was a nice gesture for staff and council as well, that we cancel July 23rd's council meeting to give council just a break in the middle of the summer, and staff a break as well. So I would need a consensus from all of you if you would be open to that idea. We are only required by our city charter to meet once a month. So counselors, thoughts? Okay, can you speak into your microphone to get us consensus?
I agree.
Okay.
Do it.
Okay.
I'm fine.
It's good.
You're good? Okay.
Yes, I'm good. That's good. That's a good sense.
What about you? Thank you so much for that. I would encourage us counselors to be able to participate in the Citizens Academy and to learn some things about our own city. Moving on to the next items on our agenda, department director reports. Any department director would like to share?
I just would like council to know that this week is Law Enforcement Appreciation Week with a special emphasis on fallen law enforcement officers. So I just want to extend thanks to all of my staff for the hard work that they do. We had our awards banquet this weekend, and it was just a great opportunity to reflect on the last year and hand out some awards to some of our staff, and so I'm super thankful for them and for their hard work. Also want council to know that a week from this Friday on May 24th at 11:00 AM are two police officers who are in the academy. They graduate. And for some reason, I don't know how they got my name, but they want me to, or they asked me to give the commencement, so I think I'm going to do that. So that's interesting. I'm kind of excited about that, and it's kind of special because we have two in that class. And so, again, if you're interested, it's 11:00 AM at the Public Safety Academy, and it's in the Hall of Heroes Room. So it's like the first door on the left when you walk in. I would encourage you, if you do want to go, to get there early because that place fills up very, very quickly. And then the last thing I would mention, since the mayor had read the proclamation for the Mental Health Awareness Month, it was interesting that you read that because it was. It was interesting that you read that because it was just this week that I had a, a contact with somebody, one of the public. Usually I'm not out on calls, but I happened to be in the area. And there was a call that came in for somebody who was really upset, in distress, potentially feeling suicidal, arguing with somebody. And so I roll up there and I made contact, and some other officers came. And what it boiled down to is this person was really upset because they had relapsed, and they were really seriously wanting to get into inpatient treatment. And they were frustrated because of the system. They just tried and tried, and they weren't able to get in. And I said, you know what? I know somebody who knows somebody, and I reached out, or we reached out to our Community Service Officer, Sean Morgan, who reached out to somebody who's connected to FAC. And I said, meet us at the PD at 8:30. And sure enough, that person showed up and was connected with resources, and there's a plan in place for him. And so I was very encouraged to see the hard work that our community and our city has done with FAC, with our Community Resource Officer, and to see fruit bearing from that. Because years ago, we would stand around and go, I'm not sure what to tell you. So anyway, it was really positive, really encouraging, and I thought council would like to know that.
That is very good to know. Thank you, because it's something we've worked on, you guys have worked on. So thank you for sharing that. Any other directors would like to share?
Get new mics soon, right? I just wanted to share some of the donations and grants that the library's gotten in the last month or so. We received a donation of over 700 DVDs, most of which we will be adding to the collection, trying to make some room for that. Got a new table, a thousand dollar table free of charge that's in our kids' area. It's really wide and great for coloring on. And then we got from Lynn County System of Care, we got a $2,000 renewed grant for teen activities for the next year. And then our teen intern will be starting on June 12th, and that is also completely grant funded through the state library. So that pays 100% of their wages. So that'll be fun for our first summer intern. Can't wait to teach her new things.
It's exciting. Congratulations on those items. Also want to say thank you, Director Larson, for including that there's possibly a modular building going to be on the Domino site soon. So we'll be watching for that. Yeah.
Yeah, where it is, it'll be installed a week, next week, Monday.
Next week on Monday. Thank you so much for that update. Any of the other directors want to share anything or any questions from councilors?
Just one thing I want, I want to talk to about. Have we got the, the speed boxes out there? Is there a plan to get those put back up, like one right across the street from here? I know that they, I don't know what they cost and all that stuff, but it seems like we should be able to, the units.
Yeah, so. We, they're over at Public Works, but Public Works has been extremely, extremely busy. So we, we've not been, you know, pressuring them to get that done. But there is a plan to get those fixed. And again, like the last time, at the last council meeting, I have included in the budget some funds for a new radar trailer and maybe two. And I'm, I'm thinking that the radar trailer is going to be more effective than these signs and less burdensome on staff because we can get, use our volunteers to move them around when we get complaints about certain areas and gather data that way. These signs, as neat as they are, they are proving to be a bit cumbersome, unless there's a different solution out there that makes it easier. There probably is, but I don't know how cost effective that would be. But I do have monies in the budget set aside specifically for, I'm thinking a radar trailer or two.
Yeah, may I one more time, please? I saw some gravel on, is it Calmaya Street down there behind Hawthorne? A lot of gravel. We're going to have some blacktop.
Juniper? Are you talking about Juniper?
Is it Calmaya? Is that the street?
Juniper.
Yeah, whatever it is. I drove on that the other day. I just, it was, it was pretty cool. Yeah, you know, the old, the old mayor is the one that caused that. Yeah, not this mayor, the longtime old mayor.
So the staff's been working there for probably two weeks.
Yeah, it really looks good.
Doing a lot of prep work for some bigger work that's going to happen here shortly. And that's been coming out of, with Blake and Levi out of the engineering department. So I've kind of, yeah, not in it as much as I have been lately. But yes, staff has been out there doing on some areas because it kind of lowers our overall cost if we do some of that groundwork instead of having a contractor come out and do it for us.
Yeah, and that really, it really looks good. It really does. So, thank you.
Can I just add one thing really fast there? So then when we're exploring some different ways on how to be doing different paving projects, and after Juniper, Ironwood is next on the list. And then we've got another list and that we are hoping to develop a plan that we will both be sharing with the budget committee and then also with the public.
Sounds good. Any other council business for Good of the Order?
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
I have a couple of things that I'd like to bring up. So we have a primary election coming to a head here on May 21st. And I just want to bring to everybody's attention, there's a super low voter turnout. I heard 11% statewide. And so on our city ballot, there's the 2024 bond measure for the fire department. And I just want to give some clarifying information. I went to the fire department. I heard the chief speak directly about his plans. And some people are confused with Lebanon levies. There's all types of fire levies across the state. Sweet Home is separate and distinct for our own special fire district. They're requesting a 10 cent per thousand increase, which would essentially put a five-man hand crew for wildland firefighting, management mitigation, purchasing of a chipper to help protect our community, work with the Forest Service and the Oregon Department of Forestry. As everybody knows, last year, 2023, we had the Wiley Creek Fire, and Sweet Home Fire District was instrumental in putting that out and working collaboratively, which is now being looked at by state officials, local officials, county officials as a really innovative thing. And Sweet Home is taking the lead on that with this bond measure if the citizens support that. So I would encourage you, speaking on my own, not on behalf of the council, to support that. I'm not necessarily a fan of tax increase, but because if they purchase the chipper and work with the departments, they could potentially self-stain in some sort of way to not have to keep asking for some more money. If they can contract out their services to other areas, they would not leave us if we needed them, but they could bring some resource, some much-needed resources into their department. So it's not tied into the Lebanon levy. It's strictly for Sweet Home only, and votes are due by the 21st. Secondly, this is a really heavy topic for me. And so we have on the front page of the Sweet Home newspaper some really damaging stories. And there is a lack of trust within the government right now. And I just, I want to try to fix that. And so during my conversations about what's going on with the fire department, I heard of some incidences that occurred that are very upsetting. And I would like to request in an executive session on that because it involves an elected official. And the community knows that we know, and they're expecting us to act. Thank you.
So when a councillor asks for an executive session, it needs to then be approved by the rest of council. So it's on the table as a motion, so it would need to be a second and then.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion in a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
President Protem Mahler?
Sure.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councillor Gorley?
Yeah.
Councillor Richards?
Yeah.
Councillor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councillor Thorstad?
Yes.
Councillor Trask?
Yes.
We have seven ayes and no nays to call for an executive session. Now we need to come up with a time that we could work on that. So is there a suggested date that would work for staff?
Does council have an idea of how quickly they want to meet?
I would prefer that we wouldn't delay. It is a very upsetting situation to our community, and they expect us to do something.
I could meet at 5:00 PM on May 16th, this Thursday. I could also meet a little earlier, 4:30 or so, if council was so inclined.
And the, we'll just have to, the only thing I just say, just for the, we just have to research that. When you have an executive session, you will know, it has to sit within a certain box. We have to just make sure it sits within a certain, they've got A, B, C, D through H that you can do, so.
Yeah, the one of those is on council behavior, so I forget which letter it is. I'm unavailable on the 16th. Is there another?
How about the 21st?
I can do the 21st. Are other councillors available on the 21st? You're good? You're good? Councillor Sanchez, you brought this up. Are you available on the 21st? What time would work best for staff?
5 o'clock would be ideal.
5 o'clock, okay.
That work?
Yep. We'll call an executive session within the right lettering, whatever that is, for Tuesday, the 21st at 5 o'clock. Any other council for Business for Good of the Order? I would like to bring up that tomorrow evening at the Sweet Home Senior Center, Willamette National Forest is planning for the future, and they are inviting public input regarding recreation in the Willamette National Forest. That meeting goes from 6:00 to 7:30 at the senior center tomorrow night. Otherwise, I will close this meeting at 7:13 PM.